We'll begin our meeting. Thank you. Okay, so we're calling a special meeting. Agenda for October 20th, 2015. Could I have a roll call, please?
Charlotte, Eric, Heather.
Eric.
Eric.
Brideway.
Eric.
All present and all who are present.
Thank you. I'd like to emphasize that this is for informational only. There will be two sides presenting. The Department of Lands has declined to come. Apparently, the person who was most first in this is out of town and was not available, and they felt he was the best to address any kind of questions that might be raised. So we have two presenters tonight. They'll each begin in 30 minutes, and there will be no rebuttal. This is just 30 minutes of factual information. I would like to start by understanding that before I go, I'm going to call on Mr. Paul Turk to give us a little bit of background. But before that, I'd like to read what's on your information sheet if you have not read that. So let's call along if you like. Commonly referred to as fracking, hydraulic fracturing involves use of water pressure to create fractures in rock that allow the oil and natural gas that contains to escape and flow up. The oil and natural gas is drawn up to a well at the surface where it is processed and refined for market. Please note that there are no current or pending applications at this time that have been submitted to the City of Eagle that pertain to this subject matter. The development law is not entirely clear what role the City of Eagle may play, might play, if any, in the regulation of fracking. Presentations we made were representatives of the Citizens Allied for Integrity and Accountability and the Idaho Petroleum Council. Each will be allowed in 30 minutes to provide information on the subject of hydraulic fracturing in Idaho and on the end of the City of Eagle. There'll be an opportunity for rebuttal, as I said before, to tonight's meeting. Representatives are welcome to contact nervous with the public at the conclusion of this meeting for further exchange of information. The general public will have an opportunity to comment on the information that is being outlined. Three minutes will be allowed for each individual. And as always, with the public, we would like very much that you don't repeat things. If you do, if you start repeating over and over, then you really lose your audience, and that just draws the meeting out unnaturally, and it's just kind of a redundant thing. So let's not do that. Let's be civil. Let's be polite to one another and treat each other with respect. So with that, I want to ask Mr. Paul Turk. Let's look. First, have our project leaders be running on that.
My question is similar to the state of the country and to the Republican Party, which is the same as one nation under God, in the middle of the world, delivering the justice of the law.
I may ask Mr. Paul Turk if he would give us some background on the legislature and what would be the transfer prior to our meeting here tonight. Turk?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to announce for the public party that sometime during this meeting, depending on how long it goes, I will need to leave for approximately 15 minutes, but I will come back.
Thank you. You'll still have four. Mr. Turk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just want to give a little bit of a legal background, and I apologize for anyone that was hoping the Department of Lands might give this presentation and if this mayor explained the person that was skillful in performing that role is not available this evening. This subject matter involves a possible interplay between local authority, state law, or administrative regulation, and even federal law. The Idaho Legislature has addressed this topic in the last year. Specifically, Idaho Code 47-317 is entitled "Oil and Gas Conservation Commission Created: Powers Limit on Local Restrictions." If you look at the history of that statute, it's been amended last year. It was amended in 2014. It was amended in 2013. It was amended in 2012. This is a developing area of the law. I'm not going to try to summarize what the statute says with regard to the interplay between state and local authority. Suffice it to say that that has not been conclusively determined, not in Idaho. There is a variety of litigation pending in other jurisdictions addressing virtually every aspect of fracking, and perhaps some of our speakers are familiar with that and may comment on it tonight. That just gives a very brief sense of kind of what the state of the law is in Idaho, the fact that it's kind of an evolving area of the law, and that the Department of Lands is heavily involved right now in administering the mechanisms by which fracking is going to be regulated by the state and by their department. Unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Turk?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I said I wouldn't ask one question, so I'm going to have to ask more than one.
You made five minutes.
Does the law prohibit us from passing ordinance to prohibit fracking in the City of Loomis?
without attempting a conclusive determination of what the statute says, it seems that that would be one of the safer conclusions that it does. It allows for reasonable local ordinance provisions, but arguably requires the city to stop short of prohibition. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Wood?
Mr. Turk, I have one basic question. The question I would have for you is, can you describe for me what regulations exist to acquire disclosure in the event of fracking? And when I say disclosure, I mean at two levels: to the regulating public agency and/or to the members of the public, either or. Can you comment on that aspect in particular?
I can't. I'm not comfortable commenting in any detail, and I'm sure our presenters can comment in better detail than I can. I will say that certainly some level of disclosure is required, and in fact, there basically has to be an application. There has to be some kind of a process. It's not like mowing your lawn or something that's like an inherent attribute of your property ownership.
Any other questions for Mr. Turk? Thank you, Mr. Turk.
Thank you.
My name is Shelley Brock. I live at 8770 West Chaffrail Road in Eagle, and a longtime Eagle resident, and I'm also a member of Citizens Allied for Integrity and Accountability. And we are the only Idaho citizens-based group that is actively fighting for our property rights and public health on this issue right now. And we're here tonight because we firmly believe that Eagle is too great to frac. At a September 22nd Eagle City Council meeting, Suzanne Bidge with the Idaho Petroleum Council stated basically that there has been land leased in Ada County. It's just part of a bigger package. There are no plans for it. Let's take a look at her statement. This is an Idaho Department of Lands map of state-owned oil and gas leases across the Treasure Valley. And she's right. If you take a look at the little red square there, that's Eagle, and it is indeed part of a much bigger package. In fact, tens of thousands of acres have been leased across this valley, including major stretches of the Boise River, the Payette River, and the Snake River, all the way to the Oregon border, starting from Starr, Black Canyon Reservoir, and Homdale, all the way to the border, have been leased for future drilling and fracking. The vast majority of leased land here at Eagle is state-owned, split-estate land. That means the surface rights have been severed from the mineral rights, as per a 1923 law that was passed requiring the state to retain minerals on land they sold. And it's important to note that the mineral rights trump the surface rights. The industry gives surface owners 60 days to come to a surface agreement on minor details of this, but they cannot prevent them from drilling. That's the law. Just last Friday, John Pizerick of Alta Mesa spoke at the interim Joint Resources Committee meeting, and he stated, and I quote, "The easiest way to accumulate acreage to go and try to drill on is to lease it from the state or feds," unquote. Here are the facts. Those minerals sat there untouched since they became the property of the state nearly a century ago. Alta Mesa deliberately sought these tracts of land, nominated them to be auctioned off by IDL, and then leased the minerals. Since 2014, 3,180 acres of state-owned land have been leased in Ada County, most of that in Eagle. In the August edition of Independent News, Alta Mesa's spokesman, John Foster, stated that they hadn't signed any leases in Ada County, but subsequent IDL records revealed that Alta Mesa has indeed leased virtually the entire 1,380 acres. Here's just a little bit of that Eagle split-estate land. This is Sedona Creek subdivision, a beautiful 40-acre subdivision on the corner of Linda Road and State Street, surrounded by three major schools and the Camille Beckman plant. Here's a couple of other great big chunks of land up Eagle Road and Beacon Light, beautiful subdivisions, hundreds of homes up there, all still in the state. Here's a 640-acre parcel on Highway 16 near Firebird Raceway, dozens of homes in there. And here's a big chunk of land on Highway 16 just north of Beacon Light. It's also part of M3, and it's been leased. All this by Alta Mesa. Across the valley, many people own their own mineral rights, and Alta Mesa and a few small exploration companies have obtained some leases through direct negotiation with the property owners, including right here in Ada County. But when that fails, they can instigate a 55% forced pooling or integration of mineral rights process. And Kaya is actively fighting this egregious violation of civil and property rights in Payette County as we speak. Eagle could be next on this. It's important for everyone to know that. So why are they here? Well, they're here because the Treasure Valley in most of Idaho is rich in hydrocarbon reserves, and new advances in technology in the form of well stimulation, they call it, which includes acidizing and fracking, allow them to extract oil and gas from tight sandstone and shale formations that they couldn't access before. The industry and state agencies have been saying for a long time that they're only going to do conventional drilling here. They've said they won't frac here. They can't frac here, they've said, because Idaho has no shale, only sandstone. And then the story changed a little bit. Well, okay, Idaho has shale, but it's the wrong kind of shale. It's not hydrocarbon shale. Just two weeks ago, I heard someone say that they were told that our shale just isn't thick enough to produce oil or gas. So let's look at a few of the well reports, historical well logs from the Idaho Geological Survey, and I've highlighted the word shale every time it appears in these well logs. And as you can see, for thousands of feet, every layer virtually is shale. This is in Teton County, Bonneville County, in eastern Idaho. Closer to home in Elmore County, Mountain Home, same thing, shale almost every layer down for about 3,000 feet. Payette County, Washington County, Canyon County, everyone, same thing, thousands of feet of shale. How about right here in Eagle, just up the road on Dry Creek? This is a well that was drilled back in the '30s. 1,260 straight feet of shale before they stopped drilling, because at that point, they couldn't get through shale. Not until they came up with fracking could they get through shale. This is right up in the Eagle foothills, not far from where I live. Three wells were drilled up there in the 1920s, and if you read some of the details on here, and I have printouts if anyone wants to see it later up close, those hills are filled with hydrocarbon, marine-origin, oil- and gas-producing shale, and that's why they're here in Eagle. The Idaho Petroleum Council on the front page of their website until very recently had this catchy little collage, which showed "Idaho's Energy Future: Front and Center Fracking and Shale Rock." If you're still not convinced, here were applications submitted by Bridge Resources, who were bought out by Alta Mesa in 2011, the first wells that were drilled here in Idaho, four of them. They put right on there, if you look in the red box, the intent to frac. Eighty-five years of conventional drilling between 1903 and 1988 proved a commercial failure here. If they could have profited from conventional drilling, they would have done so a long time ago. For Alta Mesa, fracking has been a big part of their oil and gas plays all over the country, and they specialize in stimulating flagging wells. When asked if they're going to frac, officials John Pizerick, John Foster from Alta Mesa, and Richard Brown from Alta Mesa Partners Snake River Oil and Gas have stated repeatedly that they will frac, and they've said it publicly and been heard. So let's look at the difference between conventional versus non-conventional wells. Both use massive amounts of potable water, tens of thousands of gallons versus millions of gallons, conventional to non-conventional. But all this water that's used becomes permanently contaminated with chemicals and radioactivity. That's water that is permanently removed from our drinking water or aquifer's irrigation systems, ruined forever. The disposal of toxic wastewater is equally dangerous for both conventional and non-conventional wells, whether they use wastewater pits or injection wells. The wellbore integrity, that's the risk of gas leakage from these wells, is as much an issue for conventional gas as it is for frac wells. Over time, virtually all cement casings leak. Induced seismicity through injection wells occurs in both conventional and non-conventional operations. Alta Mesa has applied for Class II injection wells. They are a documented cause of earthquake clusters in states across this nation. Flaring from both types of wells is a proven danger to communities and is a documented cause of a myriad of health problems from asthma, cancer. The risks in the supporting infrastructure are all the same: leaking pipelines, compressor stations, and refinery emissions, the destruction of roads, truck train and well pad leaks, and explosions, you name it. In non-conventional wells, tight sandstone and shale formations here will require well stimulation in the form of acidizing, which is also used for conventional wells, and fracking. Acidizing, which is also sometimes called mini-fracking, uses hydrofluoric and other acids to dissolve the sandstone in order to release the hydrocarbons. You should know that the CDC classifies hydrofluoric acid as, quote, "one of the most hazardous industrial chemicals in use," unquote. Hydraulic fracturing or fracking is the injection of millions of gallons of water, any of hundreds of toxic chemicals, many of them carcinogens, and sand under extremely high pressure in order to crack tight sandstone and shale formations to release the hydrocarbons. And they can run 20 to 30 legs horizontally, up to nearly 10 miles long off of each frac well. When you think about how much that increases the potential for contamination of our aquifers, it's mind-blowing. Do we want to see wells and wastewater pits and flaring in our front yards? Do we want methane in our tap water? Will our Eagle foothills look like this major Wyoming gas field in just a few years? This is a North Dakota farm before and after fracking. Do we really want to allow this industry to turn Eagle and the Treasure Valley into their next sacrifice zone with poisoned air and water and a backlog of lawsuits against public health, civil, and property rights issues, just so the industry and a handful of big property owners can profit? Are we going to negotiate what is an acceptable level of benzene for our kids to breathe or an acceptable level of methane to have running through our water pipes? It is our responsibility as the people who live here now and for future generations to protect this place, not for just some people, but for all people. You have taken an oath to protect our health, safety, and welfare. We want to stand with you and join people from over three dozen states that have been decimated by this industry, who are linking arms to say that our rights matter, our rights to health, safety, and welfare in the place we live, play, grow up, and grow old. Thank you. Groundwater baseline monitoring program, so that they can see what their aquifers look like. Because the challenge that we have here in Idaho is that there aren't any, or there's very little hydrocarbon data as it pertains to what exists in groundwater, very little. In fact, in some of the rural areas, probably not so much here for you guys, but in some of the outerlying areas, there's very little to know data on what our aquifers look like, hydrocarbons or not. So, you know, methane, benzene, tyline, xylene, all of those things that you want to look for in groundwater, the data doesn't exist. So 464, basically, you hear that it ties your hands. You hear that the legislature, it's their intent to occupy the field, and in fact, I heard a really good question here from, I'm assuming, I'm sorry if you catch the gentleman's name, legal counsel. Our Payette County prosecutor, Anne Marie Kelso, made an inquiry to Attorney General Wadston, and Attorney General Wadston issued his opinion number 11-1. And in his opinion, he basically says that he thinks that under the Local Land Use Planning Act, that you can enact ordinances that are protective of both private property rights and public health. There is, we had an attorney who, Mark Hilty, speak in Payette County, who I think now does work for Canyon County, and he spoke before our Planning and Zoning Commission. And Mr. Hilty, who's very well versed with the Local Land Use Planning Act, basically told our commissioners that not only did they have the authority under the Local Land Use Planning Act, that it was his position that they have the responsibility under the Local Land Use Planning Act to enact a set of ordinances that are protective of both public health and private property rights and private property values, and your infrastructure, all of those things that you as a city need to conduct business and keep things running smoothly. So we move on to 2013, another series of bills go through, and a couple of them are related to Class II injection wells. Shelley touched on that briefly. Right now, Idaho does not have approval for Class II injection wells. However, we are seeking approval as a state for Class II injection wells. Industry prefers to use Class II injection wells because they have a myriad of exemptions from federal environmental laws that allow them the ability to dispose of things in Class II injection wells, which are basically not constructed in such a manner as a higher class injection well. And because of these exemptions to the federal law, they can use Class II injection wells and in fact prefer to use Class II injection wells. I don't know if you guys have seen the news or if you've heard any of this data, but here's a little tidbit for you. Oklahoma now leads the country in earthquakes. They have, I believe it's a 3.0 earthquake on an average of every other day. In the last set of data that I saw, which was just about a week ago, so I'm sure those numbers are higher now, they have had 528 earthquakes, including two weekends ago, a 4.5 and a 4.8, I believe. And in 2013, I think it was, they had a 5.4 that destroyed buildings and did a lot of really massive damage, because Oklahoma, like Idaho, doesn't have earthquake building codes, as do we, at least those of us who live out in the outerlying areas. So again, these bills were declared an emergency. 141 is a really, is a bill that we want to pay attention to because from a small business owner's standpoint, this really kind of gets my goat. It basically makes all of the wells that industry drills exempt from personal property taxes. So they're not paying, not only are they paying one of the lowest rates of severance taxes in the country, they are exempt from personal property taxes, unlike the rest of us small business owners. In 2013, Senate Bill 1049 was passed, and Senate Bill 1049 basically changed the composition of the oil and gas conservation. Prior to this legislation, it was comprised of the state land board, the top five elected, elected being the key word here, officials in the state. And with the passage of this bill, it created a commission with five members who were appointed by the governor. And one of those appointees is a gentleman by the name of Mr. Ken Smith, who was the chief financial officer for Petroglith Energy, who did some big lead methane extraction in Beaufort County, Colorado. And this is a quote from Mr. Smith after some buildings have blown up because of the high saturation of methane in their aquifers in Beaufort County, Colorado. Mr. Smith represents energy interest on the Idaho Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. Mr. Smith would be a gentleman who is making decisions on everything that comes before the Idaho Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. So we move on to 2014. 2014, another emergency. This one talks about clarifying the definition of oil and gas and pipelines versus gathering lines. A lot of people don't understand that there is a definite difference there. Industry will stand up here, and I'm sure the Petroleum Council are going to guess, going to stand up here and talk about how heavily regulated those pipelines are and how there are all these federal laws that exist to protect citizenry. The reality is, is that those gathering lines are not heavily regulated. And in fact, following a meeting on August 10th in Payette, I had a very interesting conversation with Rhonda Louderman, who is a regulatory coordinator for Alta Mesa, who informed me that the 11 miles of gathering lines that they run through Payette County, including on the other side of that bridge, right here, Blacks Bridge, do not contain mercaptan. Mercaptan is the odorant that is required, that's that rotten egg smell that you smell if you have a natural gas leak or you're, God forbid, in the area of a pipeline leak or explosion, you smell that rotten egg smell, hopefully you'll smell it. But the gathering lines apparently, they are not required to have mercaptan running in those lines. So we have 11 miles in Payette County, including lines running underneath the other side of this bridge at Blacks Bridge on the backside of New Plymouth, upriver from the city of Franklin Water Intake Bow, that if something goes south, we're not going to have the ability to know it, to smell it, until things start bubbling or go boom. That's how heavily regulated they are. 2014. So we've got more, more, I'm not going to bore you guys, and I apologize to you guys because I know this is really dry content, but it's super important to know, I thought, Kaya thought, our members felt like, everybody needed to know this legislative history, how we came to be where we're at today, because this is a roadmap for where we're going to be if our local cities and counties don't step up to protect their citizens. There, again, property tax exemption, declared an emergency. This one provided retroactive applications. This one, House Bill 125, I was actually really, this one kind of still puzzles me because our District 9 Senator Abby Lee carried this bill, and it changed the definition of the wet gas, which is a condensate, to a dry gas. Well, dry gas prices, for those of you who follow those markets, are in the basement and have been for quite some time. The wet gas is way more valuable and expensive, but this bill was presented that it was going to put more, bring more money in Idaho's coffers. So I would really, if anybody in the audience can make that math work, I'd love to see it, because it doesn't work for me. House Bill 269 talks about how the taxes is going to be, you know, that $183 that the Payette County made, how it's going to be distributed. House Bill 49 talks about more about fees and what have you. That bill actually had a little bit of good in it. They increased fees, not nearly as much as they should have to be protective of public health, but they did increase it somewhat. 2015, you've got, this is the, a whole slew of bills came through in 2015. 123 is a maybe. 123 has to do with when you are brought before the Idaho Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, how that hearing will be held, because that hearing process is under the Administrative Procedures Act. So you are not necessarily, it's not necessarily considered a contested case, and in fact, in this bill says, not only is it not a contested case, but unless the commission specifically says, "We're going to handle this as a contested case," it is not. So the laws of the, and I'm not an attorney, I will put this out there, as I understand it, what that means is that those parliamentary laws, those laws that apply in a court of law, do not necessarily apply when it is not a contested case. They are way more lax. For example, ex parte communications can't happen, and in fact, it already happened in our case, that we're challenging for the forced pooling applications that are going on in Payette County right now, not once, but twice. House Bill 48 is a really pretty fascinating one. House Bill 48 talks about, it makes their production records confidential, and for quite some period of time, basically a year. And I would, the reason that that strikes me is because we're talking about, in a lot of cases, the people's resources. Those resources belong to we, the people. We, the people via the state of Idaho, or we, the people via the federal government. But in a lot of cases, we, the people. So I find it highly ironic that there's all of this confidentiality related to production records over resources that we, the people, collectively own. This talks about spacing units. This talks about spacing units, House Bill 124, this is real important, you guys, because this is what you're going to hear. Your industry's going to come up here and they're going to say, "We can only drill one well every 640 acres." That is not the case. They can drill however many wells in however tight a spacing they want to, and in fact, they have already done so out in the Little Willow Field in Pea County. All they have to do is request exceptional location spacing. When they request exceptional location spacing, then they get the rubber stamped IDL, and they can put those wells much tighter spacing than one in 640 acres. This is House Bill 50, this is industry's crown jewel, you guys. This is a bill that allows them to force you to do things that you don't want to do. This is a bill that says if industry gets 55% of the mineral rights in a section, they can submit, an integration, as they call it, we prefer to call it what it is, which is force pooling.
That concludes your 30 minutes. Please summarize briefly.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I was trying to look at the, it's perfect timing. That is, that's pretty much the last, force pooling. We have integration applications, we've got two of them that have been filed. Kaya is challenging them. We do not think that they're constitutional, quite frankly. If anybody wants to learn about that, they can tell us, they can come visit us. I appreciate your time. One of the things that I will quickly come out here, and thank you for your indulgence in the back of your binder, and I did not have time to talk about this, but you will find a compendium. And it's a compendium that was put together by the New York Health Professionals and the Physicians for Social Responsibility. It is 151 pages of 639 peer-reviewed studies, most have been done in the last two years on oil and gas drilling activities as it relates to public health, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Also, thank you very much for allowing me to be here today. My name's Paul Howell. I live at 13061 North Andy Scull's Road in Hidden Springs. I'm representing out of the Petroleum Council, Vice President of that Association, Industry Association, which is made up of leaders in the oil and gas exploration, production, transportation industry. And our main goal is, one goal is to make sure that we have, or to encourage consistent, you know, regulatory framework across producing states, so we don't have a hodgepodge of different regulations as much as possible. And the other major focus we have is to be a resource for elected officials, policymakers, and the public as we deal, as this new industry, this infant, it's in its infant stages here in Idaho moves forward. And myself, I'm President of Petroglif Energy, which is a Boise-headquartered oil and gas exploration and production company. We have wells primarily in the state of Utah, about 600 wells in Utah and some in North Dakota. And we operate there in the UNEF Basin in northeastern Utah, that's been producing oil and natural gas since 1948, commercially feeding five refineries in the Salt Lake City area. I would point out that we, Petroglif Energy, do not have any leases wells or field operations in the state of Idaho. We just happen to live here, parent company on Diner Mountain Gas for about 30 years. So we love Idaho and right next door to Eagle here. If you, if you indulge me, sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. I have like a five-minute video on how an oil well is drilled and completed and fracked, and I think that would give us a basis for discussions going forward, if I may.
Geologists have known for years that substantial deposits of oil and natural gas are trapped in deep shale formations. These shale reservoirs were created tens of millions of years ago. Around the world today, with modern horizontal drilling techniques and hydraulic fracturing, the trapped oil and natural gas in these shale reservoirs is being safely and efficiently produced, gathered, and distributed to customers. Let's look at the drilling and completion process of a typical oil and natural gas well. Shale reservoirs are usually one mile or more below the surface, well below any underground source of drinking water, which is typically no more than 300 to 1,000 feet below the surface. Additionally, steel pipes called casing, cemented in place, provide a multi-layered barrier to protect freshwater aquifers. During the past 60 years, the oil and gas industry has conducted fracture stimulations in over 1 million wells worldwide. The initial steps are the same as for any conventional well. A hole is drilled straight down using freshwater-based fluids, which cools the drill bit, carries the rock cuttings back to the surface, and stabilizes the wall of the wellbore. Once the hole extends below the deepest freshwater aquifer, the drill pipe is removed and replaced with steel pipe called surface casing. Next, cement is pumped down the casing. When it reaches the bottom, it is pumped down and then back up between the casing and the borehole wall, creating an impermeable additional protective barrier between the wellbore and any freshwater sources. In some cases, depending on the geology of the area and the depth of the well, additional casing sections may be run, and like surface casing, are then cemented in place to ensure no movement of fluids or gas between those layers and the groundwater sources. What makes drilling for hydrocarbons in a shale formation unique is the necessities of drill horizontally. Vertical drilling continues to adapt called the kickoff point. This is where the wellbore begins curving to become horizontal. One of the advantages of horizontal drilling is that it's possible to drill several wells from only one drilling pad, minimizing the impact to the surface environment. When the targeted distance is reached, the drill pipe is removed, and additional steel casing is inserted through the full length of the wellbore. Once again, the casing is cemented in place. For some horizontal developments, new technology in the form of sonnet sleeves and mechanical isolation devices replace cement in the creation of isolations along the wellbore. Once the drilling is finished and the final casing has been installed, the drilling rig is removed, and preparations are made for the next steps, well completion. The first step in completing a well is the creation of a connection between the final casing and the reservoir rock. This consists of lowering a specialized tool called a perforating gun, which is equipped with shaped explosive charges down to the rock layer containing oil or natural gas. This perforating gun is then fired, which creates holes through the casing, cement, and into the target rock. These perforating holes connect the reservoir and the wellbore. Since these perforations are only a few inches long and have performed more than a mile underground, the entire process is imperceptible on the surface. The perforation gun is then removed in preparation for the next step, hydraulic fracturing. The process consists of pumping a mixture of mostly water and sand plus a few chemicals under controlled conditions into deep underground reservoir formations. The chemicals are generally for lubrication to keep bacteria from forming and help carry the sand. These chemicals typically range in concentrations from 0.1 to 0.5% by volume and help to improve the performance of the stimulation. The stimulation fluid is sent to trucks and pumped the fluid into the wellbore and out through the perforations that were noted earlier. This process creates fractures in the oil and gas reservoir rock. The sand in the frac fluid remains in these fractures in the rock and keeps them open when the pump pressure is relieved. This allows the previously trapped oil or natural gas to flow to the wellbore more easily. This initial stimulation segment is then isolated with a specially designed plug, and the perforating guns are used to perforate the next stage. This stage is then hydraulically fractured in the same manner. This process is repeated along the entire horizontal section of the well, which can extend several miles. Once the stimulation is complete, the isolation plugs are drilled out and production begins. Initially, water and then natural gas or oil flows into the horizontal casing and up the wellbore. In the course of initial production of the well, approximately 15 to 50% of the fracturing fluid is recovered. This fluid is either recycled to be used on other fracturing operations or safely disposed of according to government regulations. The whole process of developing a well typically takes from three to five months, a few weeks to prepare the site, four to six weeks to drill the well, and then one to three months of completion activities, which includes one to seven days of stimulation. This three to five month investment can result in a well that will produce oil or natural gas for 20 to 40 years or more. When all of the oil or natural gas that can be recovered economically from a reservoir has been produced, work begins to return the land to the way it was before the drilling operations commenced. The pipes are cut off three to six feet below ground level. All surface equipment will be removed, and all pads will be filled in with dirt and ore replanted. The land can then be used again by the landowner for other activities, and there will be virtually no visual signs that a well was once there. Today, hydraulic fracturing has become an increasingly important technique for producing oil and natural gas in places where the hydrocarbons were previously inaccessible. Technology will continue to be developed to improve the safe and economic development
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for indulgence on that video, although I recognize, someone when I had, I recognize it's not exactly the kind of drilling that's being done out in Pea County, as far as them doing vertical wells and not fracking the well, but since that's the topic I was asked to speak to you about tonight, fracking, I'll focus on that. So what phase are we at in the life cycle of oil and gas, this industry in Idaho currently? As I think prior speaker mentioned, there was an exploration phase that's gone on for about 100 years, from early 1900s to early 2000s. There were about 150 wells drilled in the state of Idaho, none of which were economic to my knowledge. And then more recently, we've had discoveries out in Pea County of gas at about 5,000 feet in sandstone formations. And so we've kind of moved from the exploration phase of trying to find something, once you think you've found something, the next step is what's called the land brush, because basically you, before competition rolls in, you want to leave, get as, your hand on many mineral leases, as much land as possible. And, and the former speaker was correct, that you do look for the biggest blocks, whether it be from state, federal, or large landowners, to accumulate as much as possible. Now what you don't know at this point, you know, you think you've found something, you don't know whether that land is going to end up being productive or not, or what's essentially known as the industry's goat pasture. But you need to then move to the commercialization and actually bring that you have commercial, sellable product, that's the phase I understand, that I understand Altemesa's in at this point. But once you've got that pilot area and you've commercialized it, now you've got to start the geologic assessment to see how, how big is this resource and what you have and what might be effective the lands in before you then kind of work your way out and expand and develop. But I think that's one very key point, since this development is currently centered out in Pea County, you know, there's times we'll kind of watch that growth, see how that unfolds. It's, it's wideways from here to Eagle, and you don't just hopscotch around the country because with the gas field, you've got to lay, you know, pipe and transmission lines to get it to the market. So there's a period of growth, expansion, of developing the resource, developing the infrastructure, and then eventually, competition rolls in, industry matures and it grows. And so it's, it's important to know where we are in that process. Now, when you ask the question, how's this going to be developed, how, how do you go about deciding how to do it? In my opinion, you know, it's, it's all in the rocks, because the hydrocarbons are in sedimentary rock, typically laid out in marine environment, and it's either, often either sandstones or shales, where there's quite a difference. I mean, this is an example of sandstones that we're producing oil from over in Utah, and it's very important to note that the oil is not in a pool underground, it's in the pores of the rock. And the oil or gas flows through the pores of those rocks, and that's called permeability. So if the pores are connected and the oil or gas can flow through, you have permeability, and it may be enhanced further if there's some natural fracturing in the rock. But it's, it's, the, the type of development folks will do here in Idaho is based on what the rocks tell them. And if you have high permeability, you don't need to frac. If you don't have high permeability, good flow through the path, then you would, then you would normally frac. Where, where in Utah, we drill about 60 wells a year, frac every one of them, and that's, I don't know of one in the UNEF Basin that has been drilled and not completed with hydraulic fracturing. But when you have that, the result of that porosity and the ability to drain gas or oil through the rock, you end up with what's called drainage area. And that's where you get to well spacing, whether you've been, a gas well could drain 640 acres or not, you know, often with oil wells, it's probably just typically 40 acres is the standard state spacing. But those rocks will dictate the drilling and completion techniques, whether it's most cost-effective or efficient, drill a vertical well, drill a horizontal well, hydraulically fractric, don't hydraulically fractric. It's, you know, if you want to follow what the industry's going to do, you follow the rocks, because that, that tells you everything. And the part of the key is, is ultimately about economics, because industry is not going to do something just because it's possible they're going to do it if it makes sense and makes, makes money. When we drill typical oil well over in Utah, costs a million dollars apiece, about 30% of that is hydraulic fracturing. So it's, it's a significant decision, and it's not an immaterial amount to your rate of return, whether you need to employ more expensive techniques or not. And simply, the decision of whether you drill a vertical well or horizontal well, if you drill a vertical well in a week, it takes you a month to drill a horizontal well, your burn rate's about $40,000 a day. So it's a material difference in, there are a lot of techniques available. The issue, as I pointed out, is finding the technique that fits the resource that you're developing here in Idaho. Obviously, from prior presentation and others, there's myriad questions that get raised when, particularly when the industry is new in a given area. There's obviously questions about hydraulic fracturing, and I've heard horizontal fracturing, which frankly, there's no difference in how technically you do a vertical hydraulic fracturing job and a horizontal, other than how you handle the gravity when your wellbore's on site. Obviously, people, everyone's concerned with water quality, heard integration issues, state issues, so there's a number of things to be educated on. There's always a point of view, and the key point is, there are numerous states, and even next door in Utah where we operate, been through all these, nothing new here, it's all been addressed, and there's, you can just look, look to the neighbors and see how it's being done, and it's been there, been handled before. So it's, it's nothing new. Now, talking about hydraulic fracturing specifically, you saw in the video, it's all about using water pressure to create the fracture, fill it with sand so the rock doesn't press back together, and you're creating, instead of you think of the permeability of the rock, like the surface streets here, and maybe some natural fractures like probably 44, what you're trying to do is create that I-84 that connects those other pathways to your wellbore. The issue is how much of your rock is connected to your wellbore. Brief history, well stimulation goes back to the 1860s. I think it was dropping nitroglycerin down well to kind of shake things up a bit. Hydraulic fracturing was, experimental use was in 1947, commercial use began in 1949. Currently, there are 1.2 million, more than 1.2 million wells that have completed with hydraulic fracturing, and over 90% of the wells drilled today are completed with hydraulic fracturing. So it's, it's not new, it's being done every day, and it's interesting, if you've been in the industry a while, that fracking is a term that seems to be fairly new to the public vocabulary, but like I said, it's, it's been around for decades, it's been used for decades. Now, what is, this fluid that gets pumped in the ground, what does it consist of? Now, what is, this fluid that gets pumped into the ground, what does it consist of? I gave you a handout there that's a little easier to read, but basically 99.5% water and sand, some of the chemicals that are included, biocides, you don't introduce bacteria to the formation, thickening agents like DOR, you know, which would be a thickening agent used in salad dressing and other things. So you can see what is, what are these different things used for, what are they, is the purpose of fracking, but then also what is, you know, common household use for these different items? And the question was asked earlier, do you report, have some way of reporting what gets put in these wells? That's true. Frackfocus.org is a website where industry uses to post the, all the components that went into that frac job. You can look, search by state, by county, by specific well, every well we fractured. There's a one page with exactly what the percentage, what the compound was that is in that frac job. So it is, you have to report it to the state, state requires us in Utah to report it on frackfocus.org so that the general public can access the data. So is hydraulic fracturing only used for oil and gas? It's actually used, has been used in stimulating some water wells, geothermal wells, but interestingly enough, it's used by EPA as a tool, a remediation tool in their super cleanup sites as well. So it's not just an oil and gas process, it has other useful uses. But ultimately, the issue is, is it safe? Is it, are, you know, there are all these, you know, problems that are just waiting to come down the road. And if you look at our top regulators and what they say about hydraulic fracturing, like EPA Administrator Jim McCarthy, there's nothing inherently dangerous in fracking that sound engineering practices can't accomplish. Or Interior Secretary Solid Jewell, fracking's been done safely for decades, there's no doubt that this essential tool will be used for decades to come. Or Secretary Moniz, I still have not seen any evidence of fracking per se contaminated groundwater. And I would encourage you, as you go through, in educating yourself through this whole process, for every scary picture, there's a story. And, you know, as a simple example, one of the, you know, iconic images from the movie Gas Land was the guy lighting his, you know, water, tap water is kicking the sink on fire. Well, there's a story behind every one of those. In that particular case in Well County, Colorado, Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission investigated that. Insinuation it was due to fracking, deep gas exploration in the area, turns out, and you look at the drilling report from the guy's water well, drilled through four different layers of coal seams, and coal seams are full of methane and the methane sure is in the water well, but it was not there due to fracking or deep gas exploration, actually it was biogenic. When they ran a test on the isotopic analysis of the gas, you can tell the difference between biogenic gas and thermogenic gas. Thermogenic being buried deep underground in temperature and pressure, the organic matter is cooked into your oil or gas over time. Biogenic is more like what the Ada County landfill is collecting and burning off the landfill. So there's a distinct fingerprint to the type of gas. So there's a, the point being, not to debunk every myth in there, but every scary picture has a story, just like every dispute that comes before you here, the council chambers from time to time, and we just have to dig under the covers and understand the story and how has it been handled in states previously and how is it, why is it that all of these key regulators in our country are saying this is a safe process, it's been done safely and will be done safely for decades? So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I'd like to know how much money the gas and oil industry plans on setting aside once they leave and are gone, it's going to deal with the problems that we're going to be left with. The reason I say that is, the gentleman didn't discuss the man in Utah who allowed drilling on his property and contaminated the water in the entire valley. So if we're left with that, what kind of money are they going to leave to take care of that?
Please let your comments in three minutes. Tom Servino, 2773 North Tancrews, John Fierneagle. Two quick points I want to make. One is that Ultima Mesa is financially unstable. Their 10-Q report for June 2015 reports that they are 200 million of more liabilities than assets, so they have negative equity. They're, that was right before the fuel and oil prices dropped, so I imagine it's worse now, but their September financial won't be available till November. Important to know that they just sold in October some assets to cover 150 million dollars of debt. As you all know, no one's running to Dakota, everyone's running away from Dakota. So this is going to be an interesting scenario. I imagine that they may not move forward too much just because of their situation, but in any event, I would think that someone who's financially unstable, maybe someone you want to watch a little closer. Second, most important, I want to read just the paragraph from 464. No ordinance, resolution, requirement, or standard of a city, county, or political subdivision except a state agency with authority, that's the oil and gas commission, shall actually or operationally prohibit the extraction of oil and gas. So that answers your question, I believe, and it's right in the law. Provided however, that extraction may be subject to reasonable local ordinance provisions, not repugnant to the law. So just so you know, my CCNRs are repugnant to the law because they don't allow fracking or well drilling on our property, that those are no longer valid CCNRs. Which, okay, so not repugnant to the law, which protect public health, public safety, public order, or which prevent harm to public infrastructure, or, and the most important, degradation of the value, use, and enjoyment of private property. So you are allowed to pass ordinances and you might say, well, which ordinances should we pass to? Do that without saying we can't, you know, drill. But I think there are many ordinances that can be passed with regards to use of roads, access, public safety. I'm looking for accountability and that's all I'm looking for. Not a scientist, I'm an accountant. So I'd like to see some accountability with regards to what is required. Thank you.
My name is Scott O'Gara and I live at 1228 East Prairie View Drive here in Eagle. I would like to thank you for inviting us here so we could educate ourselves and hear what has to be said from the parties that have presented tonight. And I would just like to say that we elected you because we look forward to your advocating for us and keeping us informed and educated, and that's what you're doing tonight. And I look forward to your continuing to do that because I know that this is a really important issue for everyone that's chosen to live in Eagle, for the quality of life and environment that we like to live in, for ourselves, for our children to live in, and for our grandchildren, hopefully grow up in. I can speak for myself and my neighbors that we don't want fracking here. I'm not a scientist, but I know that they can do fracking in other places, that love the idea of fracking and they embrace fracking and that's great for those people that live in those places. I don't want fracking where I live. And I don't think my neighbors want fracking where they live either. And there is a story behind every picture. I, when I heard that, I did think of like Exxon Valdez disaster. There's a story behind that picture. It was sad. It was a sad story and I don't want to see any stories in my environment here repeated that remind me of anything bad devastating. So thanks for what you do and your work and we appreciate it.
I know this is a emotional issue, but I'd ask you, this is a public forum, please hold your applause. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michaelson, 1905 North Valley Beltway here in Eagle. Two things, oil and gas got inconveniently, conveniently did not address property running score for pooling, that's not part of this presentation. Secondly, if the industry has no plans to drill for hecklers board Eagle, then why not give up leases and move on? Thank you.
Captain, that's like 4028 North Downey Way in Marion. I noted that in the presentation, it said that 15 to 57% of the chemicals pumped in are recovered. The rest of those chemicals, we have to deal with for decades. I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
I would just like to make a mention as to what value the state and our legislators put on our water resources here in Idaho, which is one of the most prized possessions that we have. The Snake River aquifer flows from the east, it has west. Any contamination that's done will move that way towards the west. They talk about the fact, the gentleman from the oil and gas industry, about the fact that they drill beneath these aquifers, that is not entirely true. I have numerous articles from the US Geological Survey that talk about contaminated well water, aquifers as a result of fracking. And also the gentleman stated about the types of chemicals that they use to inject are far more than what he has stated, they're in the 500 to 600, 700 range of chemicals, the types of chemicals that are used. I have also some articles by the US Geological Survey that I would like to give the council, I believe Mayor, I've given you them previously, and it will deal with the causes of earthquakes as a result of fracking. We have numerous faults that are uncharted out here in Emmett and the surrounding foothills due to lack of funding from the US Geological Survey to get the grants to be able to find out what we actually have in the foothills and out towards Emmett. I can state that if you go to the US Geological Survey and/or the Idaho State Geological Survey, you can look up past historic earthquakes for Idaho. A nice one that occurred back in, I believe back in May of 1916, was strong enough to be felt, centered out in Emmett, was strong enough to be felt in southwest Montana, all the way to the whole central and eastern part of Oregon. Now, for something to cause that type of shaking would require something in the range of about a 6.0 earthquake at least. I used to be involved with earthquake prediction through Stanford Research Institute. I was also a good friend of one of our, one of the head geologists for the Santa Clara County, which encompass San Jose, he's now, since retired, Jim Burtman, and I learned quite a bit from him. I'm not stating I'm a geologist, I'm sort of an amateur, but I do know that the fracking, if it is done here, will cause and trigger, as it is done back in Oklahoma, the earthquakes that we now see back there. Several years ago, you did not see what is going on now back in Oklahoma. If you go to the US Geological Survey, which I do two or three times a day, you can see as a result of fracking, what it has done back there. The damage to foundations, to chimneys, to cracked homes, the industry has not paid for any of this. That's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
East Trailside Drive. Two questions. How many, for some in Chile in the audience or Alma, how many wells are currently in Payette County?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Oh, I heard it was 14 or 15, so that's quite a few. And then, pardon me? Okay. And then another question, I think you had a slide Alma, but it went by really fast. There was another meeting, was it November 7th?
Fourth.
November 4th? And what time and where is it?
Is it 7:00 PM at Eagle High School?
7:00 PM at Eagle High School? So that slide flashed really fast, so I just wanted to alert people to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Friend, I live at 2300 East Buckskin Court. The first thing I need to admit is, this is much more technical than I understand at all. I've read, I've seen the news, I've read the news, I've learned of North Dakota and other things that are happening. And in light of that, my guess is, is probably 95% of us sitting in here are in my same position. We're interested, but we really don't know. So what I'd like, the thought that's gone through my mind and I would like to suggest, and I see Commissioner Casey's here, I'll put him on the spot, but I would like to suggest a working group that would consist of the City of Eagle, Ada County, the Department of Lands, and probably the Ada County Highway District, at least initially, because one of the problems I understand that has taken place in North Dakota was just a significant amount of large truck traffic that took place. And there are probably other organizations and agencies that should be involved in that work group. And I know this is ahead of anything happening here, but I think that's what's important is to get a hold of the curve, get ahead of the curve. And I think for us to become educated and ready for what might come, whether it comes in five years or 10 years, would be very important. So, thank you, Mr. Friend.
Sir, do you have a question?
Milton Satterwhite, 1628 North Morning Place, Dr. Roan. While we've heard considerable discussions about drilling in an environment of 5,000 plus feet from the surface, my background comes from that terrestrial environment. And in the past, we had to worry about darts landing on the ponds in North and South Dakota and transmitting the residual oil surrounding the pond, that water is setting on the pond. Does it look like a pond to them? It's crude oil sitting in these catch basins. I don't hear, didn't hear anything from the gentleman discussing, other than containing the liquid that comes out. He shows it maybe going back into a truck, but there's always spills. There's always contamination. Once that's on the soil, that begins to move vertically and laterally. It doesn't stay in place unless it becomes a solid. And it begins to move and eventually will contaminate soil, contaminate subsurface environment. And then you have to remove that material and put it someplace. Putting it into the Ada County dump landfill, just moves it from point A to point B. You still have a hydrocarbon that you have to take care of. And obviously, delve into the EPA reports, when I was looking at all the EPA reports and water quality years ago, little bit of hydrocarbons goes a long way in causing a health issue. And back then, people were just dumping their heavy nose into, into streams, it dies from the dye industry in the streams, just letting it flow down there. Next guy's problem. We shouldn't have that issue here. And the school over here should not have their, we should not have our children breathing the aromatics coming off the pond, coming off the pond, or coming away from the, coming away from the drilling operation. So how are we going to control that? And then we're talking about, I saw the pipes on the surface, the collection pipes, how do you control those so that high pressure eventually doesn't break them or through adverse environment, they get broken and they have spills. Fortunately, Exxon Valdez, where I did spend a little bit of time, nature took care of it. And for the most part, when I was there, it was gone, surface site from money basically mine. So microorganisms will take care of a lot of this if you let them do that. But then, we have to sit around and breathe the aromatic.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? I would like to say that you gave us a lot of information tonight, a lot to think about. I like the idea of working group, we'll be working, I believe, with the agreement of the council, and we'll be sharing our thoughts and your thoughts with the legislature and the government itself. Appreciate it. Thank you for running your kind tonight. And maybe other business for the rest of the evening.
Mr. Mayor, I think with the recommendation of Mr. Friend made, maybe we should add, like the Division of Water Quality and people like that to a working group that might help us understand some of the other issues that have come up, not, not just us elected officials but appointed officials. but appointed officials.
The only one thing I can think is, years ago when I was working in Henderson, Nevada, a big auto mall was coming into town, and I was the city planner there. And there were a lot of people against the auto mall because of the impact it would have on the city of Henderson. And so we, as planners, were writing all kinds of conditions to condition it out. And the people who were against it came in and pointed out a very good point, that the auto mall was actually controlled by Middle Eastern money. Nothing against the Middle East, I'm just saying it had a lot of money behind it. And the point was, no matter what conditions you put on there, no matter how extreme, if we ultimately end up with conditions versus prohibition, I think there's a lot of money behind this group. And I think as a council, whether I'm sitting here or not, I don't know how long the committee will take to work on this, but I think we really need to consider the fact that there's a lot of money behind this operation. Condition, 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 the money will get around it, so I think we really need to think about prohibition.
Thank you.
I just came here to listen and learn, so that's what I'm going to continue to do.
Mr. Mayor, members of the audience, I want to say that people have made the half hour presentations for all your public comment. Before we move on any working committee, I personally want a chance to visit with the Idaho Department of Lands, I want to ask some very specific questions based on some research that I've done, some concerns that I have. And so I would ask that we define a working committee until, perhaps take it under advisement and maybe do it in a week's time at the upcoming council meeting or shortly thereafter. But I would like some time to take this under advisement, visit with the Department of Lands, and make sure that we have a comprehensive list of people that need to contribute to this working committee. I think we have a lot of reading to do, a lot of understanding to do, but I agree, I agree with that. So if you have other comments, we'll conclude our reading. Thank you.
Thank you.